All right, we're ready. All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for August sixth, sixth, twenty twenty five. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, pray. Father God, be thank and praise you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We continue to ask your blessings upon our school system, students and staff, that you'll continue to cause us to be great and successful. These blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item three, citizens address the board. Right. Number four, it's approval of the work session agenda. We have our agenda items before us. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. McGyver. Second?
Second.
Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, Dr. Williams.
Okay. All right, first thing was today was the first day of school and I visited every school and I was just telling um somebody it was really like it was about the second or third week of school. Everything was running so very smoothly at each school. Uh, we had a total of thirteen hundred and twelve warm bodies today. That is not the number that was on roll, but that is the number that showed up. We have a lot of students in college courses at the high school and they don't start until the eighteenth, so they might or might not have come today. So he said there's probably several more that should have been there for him. And I know at Todd Grant, they have seven hundred and twenty-eight on roll, but only six hundred and eighty were there today.
They had fifty enroll Monday.
Oh, I don't think.
Was it fifty?
That's what I was hoping. They had a lot to enroll Monday. They didn't tell me that. I know they had a lot that came and had not finished. They were trying to finish up their enrollment during open house. So. Um, YMCA update. Um, the YMCA is not closed against all the rumors going around in town. It is not, the building is not closed. We are not gonna be doing Y-Base, the before and after school care anymore. They just didn't have enough to fund someone to be there for that. Um, and then Mary and I were supposed to touch base today about Y-Reader for third grade and we kept missing each other on the phone. So I've got that on my list to call her again tomorrow. So, there's that.
Any problems on the new site?
They are. Uh, Will it, Will said that they looked at a spot one day last week, or maybe Monday, and then he had a conversation with the College of Coastal Georgia because the Lucca Center is planning to lease part of the CRC building. And if they lea, if that lease goes through, YMCA is gonna sublease from them and use the GM out there. Right now, that's all still in the works. Uh, boys and girls update, we had a meeting today. Ms. Kathleen's on that board too. We had, so we were here together for a meeting today. Um, our annual fund drive, they have raised over ten thousand dollars. Um, they will be coming to do, I think in September, they're coming to do an update for us. But um, one of the numbers that was just astounding to me is they fed, they did forty-nine hundred meals over the summer for kids and they, they did feed our football players during summer camps. Um, their average daily attendance over the summer was seventy-two. Uh, the Twenty First Century Grant, they, you know, that did come through. I think I sent that out to you guys, that the DOE finally released that. And today they were talking about, that is sixty percent of their budget. So that is real important that we keep that grant. And then we have um Taste of the Wild coming up, November the sixth, and I have tickets for sale. We all have tickets. We board members all have tickets to sell. All right, that's it right now for.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to B, um, goal area two, organizational effectiveness. And number one is our discussion of our minutes. If you'll read over those and let Ms. Lane or Dr. Williams know if you see any issues with those. And then we'll turn it over to Ms. Tammy for the July financial report.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, general operating account, July thirty-first. We began the month with just over a million dollars. Uh, we did have a transfer in of a million dollars from the money market fund and we had expenditures of a million nine, leaving with one point four million in the general operating account. General fund revenue, um, as you know, most everything that posts during July and August is approvals for FY twenty-five, so we have very little revenues for the month of July and August. Uh, we had two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars posted for the month of July for the general fund. And expenditures, I wanna point out uh that negative in the instructional, I, I reversed some August salary approvals by mistake, so that will correct itself after August payroll. Uh, but we had posted five hundred and six thousand dollars, uh, which is just two percent of the budgeted twenty million dollars for expenditures. General fund changes in fund equity, uh, as of seven thirty-one is seven point five nine million in the general fund, fund equity account. School nutrition, uh, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the school nutrition bank account, uh, fund balance, four hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four. Money market account. We began the month with seven point seven six million. We had eighteen thousand in interest for the month of July. We had that transfer out of a million to the general operating account, leaving six point seven eight million in the money market account. The Eastwast Project, no activity, five hundred and sixty-six dollars in that bank account. Local projects account, uh, we had some expenditures, began the month with two hundred and eighty-three thousand, uh, had thirty-six thousand in expenditures and leaving two hundred and forty-seven thousand in the local projects account. And debt service, Georgia Fund One, we did not have the interest when this posted, but we began the month with five point four six million, had uh Eastwast receipts of two hundred and sixteen thousand, leaving five point six eight million in the Georgia Fund One account. Those July receipts, the Eastwast receipts, was an increase from July of twenty twenty-four of seventeen point two percent. And for the fiscal year average increase uh was at ten point two percent. And that fiscal year collections go from August first of last year collections through the July collections that get pulled into this fiscal year or last fiscal year. So, ten point two percent double-digit increase, that's still good news. So, that's all I have. Are there any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. All right. Number three is the discussion of transfer from the money market to the general operating for August payroll. Ms. Tammy?
Okay, just, I just wanted to put that out there, that with very few tax dollars coming in right now, we may need to continue to transfer uh to cover the July expenses or August expenses and August payroll.
Okay. Any questions on that? All good. All right, number four. Ms. Tammy again.
Mm-hmm.
Just that energy efficiency lease payment I'm due, so we just want you all to uh transfer that from the Georgia Fund One to make that payment.
I didn't wanna read that one.
She doesn't like to say those words.
I don't like to say that ABM stuff, but, okay. All right, number five.
Number five is the ratification for the concrete track. I hope you will walk to the front and look at the playground before you leave tonight. Um, it's coming along very nicely. The rain needs to stop so we can finish. Um, but it's just to ratify the vote from last week that y'all did on email.
Okay, do we need to do that tonight?
No, you can actually do it next week. It's fine, yeah.
All right, is there any questions on that? It looks really good out there.
I know, it's gonna be so pretty.
Those guys that did that though.
They have, they.
They have worked through.
They have worked through that heat. I don't know how they did it.
Okay, number six.
Um, the FY twenty-seven Capitol Outlay Project, this is for the MCA roof. Um, we have to actually have board approval before we can turn in all the stuff for the grant. We have done what we can do up to this point, and so then once it's approved next week, or if you approve it next week, then we can sign off on it. Like, you have to actually sign it missy for us to send up to DOE.
Okay.
So, that's, it's just a, a formality. For us to pay for the roof.
All right, any questions on that?
Or be reimbursed for the roof, I should say.
All right, number eight, I mean, number seven, I'm sorry.
All right, there were some questions about this one. So this is net equipment for softball and baseball to be used in the indoor facility at MCA. Um, this was budgeted at ninety-eight hundred dollars and then there was an increase when we asked for the new quote. Um, it is not a permanent, well, it is a permanent thing, but it's on cables and it slides. So when softball or baseball goes in to use it, they slide the net, then they do whatever they're gonna do, and then they slide the net back so that it doesn't interfere with other people using the building. Um, and I think, was it you that told me one, it, one side it goes into the, explain where the cable, that it's out of the way, like in the indention in the wall and then
Yeah, it's.
In the padded corner, or was that, was Bradley talking to me about that?
When I talked about it, it was strategically places you could be in that, in that room where when they do slide it out of the way, it should be out of the way.
Yeah, it goes into the indention and, or, it was on my notes, sorry. It's on hooks, it retracts. Um, this is a very difficult quote to get. The first one, I hope you noticed, came in at like twenty-one thousand. Um, only a few companies actually will come and, and install. You can buy the net, but then you have to get it installed and there's only a couple of companies that do that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions about that?
Were you gonna say something?
No, go ahead.
Oh, so where's this net going or netting?
It's gonna be in the multipurpose room. Um, that's the plan.
Don't we have a batting cage down there between the two fields?
We do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what's the purpose of putting it in the multipurpose room?
Extreme heat in Georgia possibly is a, not possibly.
And it's, it's partly supervision of students when they have a lot of kids there doing extracurricular and trying to keep them all in one location.
I could see interior versus exterior. I mean, that's an obvious difference.
It's hard to send one or two kids over to practice over there if you can't, if you don't have a coach to go with them.
That's all I guess.
Okay. Any more questions on that? All right. We'll move on to number eight.
Ms. Rachel, you wanna share that with us? Dr. Carlisle's like trying to work magic here with this one. We couldn't legally get out of our contract, so we tried to work other magic to save some money.
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to address them for eight at this time. Uh, uh, before I stepped into Mr. McNair's position, um, he was approached by Nurse Cheryl Rosier at McIntosh County Middle School. Um, I believe she approached Dr. Williams as well about the possibility of working as a system employee rather as being contracted through Georgia Nurse Care. With that being said, um, after looking at her contract, there is a liquidated damages fee. Um, if she is to, if she is to remove and separate from Georgia Nurse Care, she is not allowed to work for any other school institution. She's not allowed to work anywhere for a hundred and eighty days. There's a non-compete clause. So in order for her to come work for us and for us to hire her as an employee, we would have to pay a liquidated damages fee, which in her contract was listed as ten thousand dollars. And I understand that Georgia Nurse Care has some fees to recoup with rehiring in that process, but I've been working with them on trying to lower that amount. Um, after working with um Ms. Nurse Suzanne Kennedy as the representative from Georgia Nurse Care, um, she's reached out to their CEO and the owner actually is who she went to um, since we weren't able to make progress with the CEO or the business manager, but they were able to offer us a fee of seven thousand five hundred, which is not ideal, but better than ten thousand. So that is why that is on the agenda this evening.
She is.
And what is the purpose of her making that change? I mean, that clearly it's to benefit the employee. I presume, does it save us money?
Is she our only nurse that we have through this company as of right now? Yes.
Our other two nurses.
That would completely eliminate that contract with those.
I mean, my understanding would be.
Yeah, we would just contract with her individually.
And that would probably be less expensive than using the company. Seventy-five hundred less?
Throughout the year.
Are probably a little bit more, yeah.
Okay.
What would be the difference?
That makes it plausible.
It's, it was, she gets paid twenty-something an hour.
Forty-four an hour.
And we paid forty-four an hour to them.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that is a big difference.
It was, it was a big chunk.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Dang.
She's retired.
Not if we did, she's retired. So what we would do is a contracted services.
Okay.
If we hired her again, but we just can't do that because we can't get out of this contract.
Okay, okay. Sounds like a plausible point.
Now, we could break this contract and hire somebody else, but Scott really likes her and she does a good job, so.
Oh, no. If it's working, keep it working.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number nine, our academic calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I know, it's hard to think that far ahead, I know.
Well, it'll be here before we know it.
It really will. Um, and I do like for people to know their schedule ahead of time. So this one goes back to a hundred and eighty student days and TNPL and teacher days. Uh, I hope you had a chance to look at it. It pretty much follows what we've been doing. Uh, did anybody have any questions about it or I kept the inclement weather days? The conference days? Questions?
Okay.
If you have any before next week, let me know.
I will make a comment though, just because it was brought to me the other day about the spring break. But um, somebody had asked, were we trying to align this with Glen County?
It is for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay.
It is not for twenty-five, twenty-six, and if y'all want to think about that, if you think that we could change spring break for this year.
I think since everybody already knows and the calendar's been out a whole year, people could have made plans.
Glenn was very late in putting their this year calendar out, I think, but I mean, I think it'll be fine. And I've already checked, it does not affect our GICU students at all.
All right, everybody good with this? We'll look at it this week? All right, number ten, our policy revisions.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
It should be a big packet here.
I did give you a hard copy.
Mm-hmm.
And I sent you notes this time, um, from what I took from when I was talking to the consultant. So, um, we, I met, Tammy and I met with the consultant and then he gave us homework. And then um, I sent homework to Ms. Shamasah, Mr. Boone and Ms. Harrison over a weekend, and then we all came together and talked. And then um, I asked Mr. McGyver and Ms. Brigman to come and us go through it, and Mr. McGyver couldn't come, so we called and Mr. Hewitt came. We went through it. Um, this one was a big one, like it was a lot. But um, then I got back on with the guy and we've, I think we have it how we want to do it. So, one, I will ask, are there questions? Did my notes make sense to you?
I have a question, a clarification. Hey, I was reading, and I, I'm discombobulated, I didn't. It's the part about where if we have something that we're going to dispose of and the old version says that we would do it a pub, we would sell it publicly or we would sell it with an auction. The new language includes a private sale. So, uh, two questions. What would that process look like? And then I did email Mr. Smith and ask him, you know, what, what it would look like legally and what it might look like in, in, in most.
I think that's, that's, we had already changed that. And the one that they had was our old ver, was the old version. We had already changed that to include private sale.
Yeah, cuz we've been doing that.
But they worded it a lot better than I had worded it.
But, so you're saying that I missed that in the red that it's.
No, no, they, they missed it. They had, they, when they downloaded our manual, when I paid them last year the first check, they downloaded our manual then. Since then, we have already updated that policy to include private sales.
Can you explain to me how that works? I'm just curious.
We just sold a van. That was a private sale.
So.
You just.
So you just.
If we are to, if we take something off and surplus it, we can sell it to anybody.
So it's like I was an employee and I knew that you were getting rid of that van. I could come to you and say, can you do this for me? So do we go by, well, like the van, do we go by book value or just?
Or what we have in it.
Yeah, what you have in it. Ms. Tammy can probably explain.
Tammy looked up, she looked up.
I looked up the depreciated value, cuz, you know, we've had, we've depreciated it for two years basically, so I gave you what the depreciated value is.
Okay, so there, so there's like a procedure for that kind of thing.
So we're not losing any money on our books.
Okay. Yeah, so like if we were to get rid of the batting cage, for example, you know, go to all nets, then we would do that same kind of procedure for anyone.
And we had to put that in because we were going to sell some computers to employees. We wanted to offer
Yeah, I saw that.
old computers to employees, and so they got to buy them for like twenty bucks.
So how do, how do people know that they don't, so it's not public, so it would just be if you were.
Well, those we sold just to employees.
Okay.
Well, they would, if they follow us on our meetings, they would see when we surplus things.
Okay, so it comes to us first. I guess that's what I'm trying to get through.
Yeah, it comes to us to surplus. No, everything comes to, and, and it's surplus first.
Okay, well, we think about the.
Then it's put either on, we run ads in the paper, like when we have buses that we are surplusing.
But would that be, I, I'm, I'm, I'm obtuse, but so if you put it in the paper, that's not a public sale, that's still a private sale?
That could, no, yes, that would be a private sale. They make bids on it.
Okay, so it would just basically come to us first. You follow us, then you would know.
But we have also held public sales, like when we had like a whole building one time, we had stuff we needed to get rid of. We just opened it up, people came and looked.
Okay, yeah.
Kind of like a yard sale.
Yeah, that's just.
And literally it was like a lot of yards.
It was like a yard sale.
That's the key, is that prior to them taking any action, it has to come to the boards.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It has to be surplus first.
They have to classify it or designate it as surplus property.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was thinking, you know, me, if I'm just a private citizen selling something private, Lord, I can put it on marketplace, but there is a governmental procedure.
Yeah, we have to surplus it before it can go any further.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? I will let, tell you on the bids and quotes, the um, one that went from a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty, that was a legislative change that I wasn't aware of until I was talking to Jimmy. Um, exemptions, we did, we were gonna strike out a bunch of those, but the guy said, just leave it in and you can take them anyway. It just means, it doesn't mean you don't have to take them. He said, if you take them, take them. He said, but I think what they're trying to, you know, they give us boilerplate language that all the systems kinda use or what the league lawyers use, which he helped us with our next one that we're gonna talk about the next. Um, the buildings and grounds, I told you there's gonna be a no smok, smoking one come in later. The emergency closings, we've already adopted that one in AFC. Um, I think that was it. Rose checked with her person and we're good on a shorter version of that wellness one. And we're gonna add what we had put in there as procedures, so. So if you didn't read over the weekend, you have another week to read. I could tell you if you need nighttime reading material, put it on your nightstand.
Stay awake all night, you just read. And next week when we vote on these, we'll just be voting to put these on the table for review for thirty days.
And we can change anything in between there. I mean, after that. If you find, if you find something, you find an era, whatever, let me know. I found a couple this weekend policies when I sent out the policy handbook for staff, so it's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna fix them as we go.
All right, any more question on these policy reviews? All right, number.
I'm sorry, can I ask one more thing?
Yes.
What does nominal ma, value mean in, in, in the wording for like surplus stuff? Cuz it's, you know, I'm, I totally get, you know, things are so much more expensive. We went for like fr, from five thousand to ten thousand for approvals, I mean. But it, it used the language nominal value. Is there a, is there a specific language for that or is that just a arbitrary?
Probably legalese.
Yeah, that, that, that's why I was asking Mr. Smith is.
It is essentially what, I mean, it really, it, it, it refers to something, at least in my opinion, that is, um, depreciates fairly quickly and or is outdated. You know, it's that when you start talking about computers, buses, those types of things. Where we replace it and suddenly it's, has nominal value. I mean, that's not worth, it's, it's worth very, so it's kind of a two-pronged type thing. It's worth very little up to us because we've declared a surplus, we've replaced it. But at the same time, it's not gonna be big bucks on the market either because chances are if it's in the, if it's technology or something like that, it's already kinda outdated anyway, yeah. So that's, it, it's kind of a a brawl.
A gray area.
Yeah. I mean, but yeah, the definitions, they, they encompass a lot of different.
So would that be below that ten thousand mark there, or it really doesn't even apply to that, because it's up to the fifty thousand?
Be relative to the value of whatever you're talking about.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with that.
Dollars or ten thousand.
Okay. Little baby, but not little baby, but smaller, that's, okay.
We went across this one time in Wayne County and they said the nominal value is the face value or stated value of something we choose what that is at, at um, depending on a lot of factors like age of the equipment, um, you know, you have a car that's on blue book worth seven thousand dollars, but we know the transmission's gone and, and the tires are all busted up and the rims aren't working. The nominal value is the face value, the stated value that we say.
I was kinda thinking what the market will bear, so to speak, would be the nominal.
It's kinda all of the above. I think we're all hitting on.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just.
Whatever we say.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, number eleven.
Ms. Boone, you wanna talk about that? And why we have to do it now, instead of when we get to I?
So we're having to go ahead and do the Internet Acceptable Use Policy change due to this line right here. Um, that, you really can't see when I highlight it, but Protecting Georgia's Children on Social Media Act of twenty twenty-four, this is a new law that said we have to have the policy updated and uh, board approved before October first and upload it to the state by October fifteen.
For their approval.
For their approval. Um, so this is the policy we are changing in its entirety to follow the GSBA template that they sent out. Um, Dr. Williams and I went through it and it leaves enough room for us to do the things that we need to do in procedure, but this is literally the boilerplate language that GSBA sent to us and keeps the policy very concise. Um, and hopefully following the law as they intend it.
Do y'all get those policy reviews? Do you get those policy updates?
Yes.
So when those come out, um, I had not looked at Julias and so Mr. Gaultney called me back and he goes, have you looked at your July policy? I said, no, it's in the bottom of my email stack. So I went and found it and it had what we needed in there, so.
Okay. So this is on E-Board.
Not yet.
For, I mean, for, on our meeting.
Yes.
Yes, it's on E-Board, I mean, E-yes, it's on Assembly for our meeting, so if y'all want to read over that.
I don't haven't changed Assembly yet because I was having issues.
But it is under our meeting, so if you'll log in there and just read it before next week. No, that's what I meant for us to, for everyone to read it.
And then things that, we wanna tighten up some of the other stuff in our technology procedure book. You know, some of the other things that we would do, like when they vandalize a computer or things like that.
All right, number twelve.
Uh, this one is one that Tom called me, well, Tom sent me an email really late Monday night. And um, I read it after I got home from open house and he goes, I know, I'm at your mercy, but I really need to get something on y'all's um, next board meeting. I said, well, that's this week. And he goes, oh my gosh. So anyway, he came by yesterday. Um, I, I gave you the whole document for the, the Tycole project. Um, it's for a tax abatement for two years, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And then they pay in increments up to a hundred by twenty thirty-two. So you can look at that. We have to, we have to either approve or disapprove because we are a taxing organization.
And it's just for two years and then we'd go back every two years and look at it possibly?
No, no, it's two years of no taxes, then they pay twenty percent, forty percent, sixty percent, eighty percent, a hundred percent.
It's a six-year abatement.
Yeah.
And it's scaled back up in, back at a hundred and six. And it's scaled back up in, back at a hundred and six, that's six years.
I had to ask several questions.
Not a reason, it's not an option.
It's what?
It's not an option.
Yeah, no. And if we, if, if y'all had time to look at that, I would like you to vote on it tonight. If not, he said it would wait till next week, but he's just trying to get ducks in a row for the new business.
Sixty million dollar project.
It is. It is.
We definitely don't want to be a barrier.
Yeah, well, it's not down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Or is every, is anyone prepared to vote on this tonight, or you are over? Okay. All right, so let me read the motion. Superintendent recommends approval of the tax abatement for NCIDA for the Tycoold project. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Straggles, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGyver. All those in favor? Okay, no one left to oppose?
Thank you so much.
Motion carries five zero. All right. Starting with you again.
All right, community engagement. Um, I wanna thank the Sheriff's Department for their Back to School Bash and their National Night Out. I think that, um, I told Chief Taylor we might have a new tradition of having National Night Out at the high school. Um, it was a really good event. Um, the open houses went really well. Um, Todd Grant changed a few things with their open house, and it seemed to go a little smoother. Middle school wouldn't let them have schedules until they watched the dress code video, um, and the cell phone videos, so they had to watch this little video before they could get their schedule. Um, and then if you went to the high school, you got shrimp and sausage, Low Country Bowl, or you got a hamburger-
Hot dogs.
Or hot dogs. And Ms. Dr. Jennings, she, um, saw that it was a partnership and called them and asked what she could do, and she cooked for two hours. And it was hot in there and out there, I know, because like the guys were just dripping. Um, but they went back the next day and cleaned that area out there where they did the Low Country Bowl and pressure washed it and everything, like it's, it looks really good. I looked at it today. Um, and then our new teacher, um, orientation and system-wide events, thank you to our community partners who help us with that. Burlington, the Adopt a Classroom, I haven't gotten this on Facebook yet, but I'm gonna get it on there. Um, Todd Grant Elementary School got a five thousand dollar grant from Adopt a Classroom from Burlington. And then Katz Whittle also dropped off checks last week, Todd Grant, three thousand dollars, and the middle school, one thousand dollars for school supplies. So. Lots of good partnerships, lots of good money coming in.
That's good. All right.
And that's all I got.
All right, Dee, um, call Area Five. We'll go to executive session. I could have a motion for legal and personnel?
Mm-hmm.
All right, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett. Second.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Straggles. Why I can't figure y'all's names? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. We will be back. Okay, the board had adjourned to executive session, discussed personnel and legal. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewlett.
Second.
Second, Mr. McGyver. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Um, a motion, please. I'm sorry, I was-
Oh, I left out a word.
Motion?
Motion.
Okay, go ahead, Jenny.
Dr. Jennings?
I'll say.
I was trying to see what I left out. Second by Mr. Straggles.
Oh, I left out a word.
All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, yes.
Hewlett.
Mr. Hewlett and Straggles.
I saw you raising your hand. I thought you were just stretching it out.
I, I was taking notes for you. I was taking notes for you.
Well, I was reading ahead, and then I got behind.
You seconded the first one? I thought you seconded the last one.
I told you the last one.
I seconded the first one.
You seconded the first, yeah, that's right.
Return to open session is-
Hewlett, McGyver.
Yeah.
And then Jennings and Straggles.
Don't get the Fresno stuff, whatever you do.
Yes.
Yes.
That was my fault. I was reading the-
Are you straight L?
The go-to executive session.
I left out a word. That's what I was saying.
Hey, y'all, check, check her D. Check her D.
You did.
All right. We good?
We good.
All right, comments. Anybody having comments tonight?
Happy first day.
Yep.
Yes.
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Do like lots, and I won't wait to the TV cameras.
All right, okay. Nothing else? All hearts and minds clear?
All minds and hearts are clear.
All right, keen to whoever.
We're adjourned.